Good evening. It's 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 13th, 2024, and this meeting is now called to order in the council chambers at City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. Tonight, the Sandpoint City Council and Sandpoint Planning and Zoning Commission are holding a special meeting for the purpose of a joint work session on the update and Sandpoint Comprehensive Plan. No final decisions will be made during this evening's meeting, and members of the public will have an opportunity to comment. If you wish to comment, you will need to please complete a comment signup sheet located at the back of the table by the door and hand it to the clerk at the front of the room. For the record, I am Mayor Jeremy Grimm. Also present are City Councilors Deb Rule, Joe Espiro, Justin Dick, and Amy Pet. Councilor Espiro is participating remotely. Council President Jason Welker and Councilor Kyle Schreiber are absent. Also in attendance are City Planner Amy Twetton and Associate City Planner Sarah Gilmore. Uh, now, this, this meeting tonight, um, my intent here is to go through the comprehensive, the draft Comprehensive Plan, chapter by chapter. Um, some chapters may have no comments. Some chapters may have, um, a variety of, uh, comments or feedback from, uh, the city council. Um, in those situations, because we're not making a decision tonight, um, what works well is if there is a, uh, language that's in the draft that, uh, would, uh, prevent you from supporting its adoption. Uh, I would just ask that you state that, and we can work on that language right here. Uh, likewise, if there's language that, uh, is absent from the draft, what you absolutely would need in there to support this Comprehensive Plan, um, we will, uh, work on that language. And, uh, it'll be a straw sort of pole where all, because we're not making decisions, I'll simply say, does anyone object to the modified language? Um, something to that effect, but we won't be making a decision. Um, the goal here is to work through this. Um, in our last Comprehensive Plan, this process took twenty-two special meetings. Um, I don't think this is going to take that long. There's a lot of division about the, uh, context of the plan in two thousand and nine. Um, but it may take more than one working session, so, uh, we'll just go as far as we can tonight, uh, until someone says uncle, or we decide that it's, um, a good time to, um, to wrap it up and continue. Now, for the public, um, what I would like to do is, uh, we will discuss and look at comments, chapter by chapter. And at the end of each chapter, um, we'll, I'll make time for the public to comment on that chapter. So the public can hear, uh, what changes, uh, deletions, additions were made, and then we'll, uh, move on to the next chapter. So we're gonna take it piecemeal, and, uh, Planning Commission, thank you so much for being here tonight. Um, uh, your work, uh, in the Steering Committee of, is anyone here, was anyone here on the Steering Committee? Ellie, thank you for your work on that. Um, uh, thank you for, uh, guiding this so far. It's, uh, an excellent document. Um, it borrows a lot from the old Comprehensive Plan, which I am, uh, pretty fond of myself, so, um, with that, I will, um, yield the floor to Planning and Zoning Commissioner Chairman John Hastings for a roll call of the commissioners present and, uh, confirmation of a quorum.
I'll be, Sarah. I'll be calling roll call. Commissioner Benner?
Here.
Commissioner Boyd?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunkle?
Here.
Commissioner Hastings?
Yes.
Commissioner Remar?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons and Torpey are absent.
We will now proceed with our work. So, oh, before we proceed, if everyone will please stand, I will lead us in a pledge of allegiance. That, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We will now proceed with our work session. So, um, council members, um, again, this is primarily for the council with the support of the Planning Commission. Um, but the commission, in this role, I see you as, um, certainly if you have, uh, comments, those are appropriate. Um, but, uh, I, I'm here. I, I think I'm gonna draw, we'll draw on you primarily for the contextual aspect of if something's in there. What were the discussions? Why'd you deliberate it? You know, where did you end up? How did you end up here? Did you even talk about these things? So, um, with that, uh, council members, um, uh, shall we start on page? I, uh, well, actually, Amy, do you want to just give us a, a brief summary for the public who may not be aware of the process that we've been through so far? If I could ask you just to run through that. Thank you.
Sure, and unfortunately, it's a little hard to read. This is a graphic, um, that's been following us through the process. This is the, um, process, not of the whole plan, but from the period where there was initial draft, and that was almost a year ago now, the initial pulling all the document chapters together and coming up with the draft. Um, and that was the Planning and Zoning Commission working on that plan, and they posted that online, um, April to May of last year, and then held an open house on that initial draft, April 27th. Uh, based on the comments at that public hearing, um, they took a, uh, draft and held a joint workshop with city council at that time. That was May of last year. Um, and then additional changes came out of that joint meeting. Um, and that a draft was, uh, provided to the Planning Commission, Planning and Zoning Commission, who then scheduled a public hearing in August. Uh, based on comments at the public hearing, additional changes were made. Uh, and then they forwarded their recommended plan to city council, uh, for a public hearing on October 4th. Uh, at that meeting, council felt that additional input was required. Uh, so we scheduled additional public workshops, and we had the document posted online for commenting for almost a month. Um, and that was November, December of last year, last year. Um, we have not revised the documents since, uh, the August Planning and Zoning Commission. We've just been taking all those public comments to the point where city council is ready to have a final draft, uh, and then they will schedule an additional public hearing. So that gets us to tonight, which is a workshop between the two bodies discussing the draft and the comments received to date.
Thanks, Amy. Um, and Amy, as we start in on chapter one, is, is there a, a convenient way for you to, uh, go through the documents? So you can show us, um, public comments that have come in on that chapter, uh, since the, uh, open houses?
Yeah.
Or if you could at least summarize as we're going through, um, for those of us who don't have it in front of us, those comments at the moment.
So what I will be sharing, this is the draft that actually has the comments embedded into it from the online commenting. So on every page where people commented, you will see numbers that pop up, and then those comments follow that next page.
And Amy, can you make that a little fuller screen, screen, or, uh, is that possible?
Zoom and get in. I don't know how.
Oh, perfect. Excellent. We all square. Any questions from the council? Any questions from P and Z? Everyone good? Excellent. Um, I, I have one question for, um, the only member of the eighteen Steering Committee members who's in attendance tonight. Um, Ellie, could you just, can you summarize real quickly that Steering Committee process? Did you have a bunch of meetings? Did you gather weekly, monthly, um, have cookies, walk around town?
Um, I remember the meetings here. Uh, there were meetings here in council, and, um, I don't remember walking around town, but we had very vigorous discussions at that point.
Right, right. And you, did you work directly with the consultants, or?
Um, at that point, I believe we were working with staff.
That.
Yes.
Cool. Thanks, Ellie.
Sure.
Um, council members, uh, anything on page II that you would like to see discussed? Modified change, sort of the, um, index and acknowledgement of those who were participants? Uh, I think the only thing I would add is just a reflection of the new council members, uh, Sarah or Amy, um, on II, just to reflect, uh, the new folks who are gonna be actually voting and adopting this, uh, putting them on there. It's my only comment. Anything on page III? About page four. I have, uh, a comment on page four, council members, um, appendix E references the downtown design competition report. Um, Deb, would you like to share?
Well.
We can probably get you one printed out, too.
I thought we were gonna be at our screens. I thought we were gonna be at our screens.
Um, page four, appendix E has downtown design competition report. I would, um, throw out there that that should be stricken from the Comprehensive Plan. It's not an adopted plan, um, like a multimodal plan, or a recreation plan, or urban forestry plan. Um, it's effectively, um, well, it's a competition, and there's a report. Um, it, it includes a lot, and I guess my concern with including it in the Comprehensive Plan is it may suggest that we're gonna have a Whirlamobile and ice skating rinks and other things. Um, I know it's visionary down, down at the city beach. Um, my preference would be to, uh, utilize and leverage that, uh, where appropriate, but I feel like putting it in the Comprehensive Plan gives it a elevation and, uh, uh, sort of direction that we haven't, I don't think, come to as a community yet, so, um, I likely won't be voting on this unless you're tied. Hopefully, you're not tied. This is gonna be a six-zero vote, but those are my only comments on appendix E. I would recommend that be stricken, but I defer to you, uh, and Joel.
Happy with that.
You, you.
Breaking in, picking up.
You would agree, or you, you would.
Would agree.
Come, okay. Um,
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Joel.
Uh, Councilman Spurrow. Yeah, if you guys don't mind, uh, identifying who's speaking. Um, uh, so I, like, addressing you properly would be helpful. Um, I'm dri, yeah, just 'cause I'm driving, and that'd be helpful. And I, again, I apologize, everybody, that I'm able to be there. It's been a very difficult forty days, so this is just part of the deal. So, if, yeah, if you can just identify, uh, who's speaking, that'd be so helpful for me. Thank you, guys.
You bet, uh, Councilman Espiro. So that was my, um, raising the concern about appendix E being included in the Comprehensive Plan, which is the downtown design competition report, uh, and Councilwoman Duquette, um, uh, uh, affirmed that that would be a concern or something she would prefer be stricken.
Thank you very much.
And, um, if we, if things are just floating out there, we don't necessarily need to reach consensus tonight. It would be nice, um, but we're missing two of our council members, of course. Um, if it came to the hearing, and Zach can help me out here, our attorney, um, you know, if it were at the public hearing and something like that were stricken there, um, doesn't seem like a material change, but I would defer to you if that striking at the public hearing for adoption would kick it back into a rehearing.
Without committing to that, uh, right now, I, I might, I mean, knee-jerk reactions is to say it wouldn't be a material change.
Well, the only thing that I would say is there is language in the document that refers to appendix E.
Correct.
As we get further.
Correct.
So that would need to be.
Yeah. We'd have to change that.
Yep. Um, Councilman Dick, uh, any thoughts on that removal of appendix E?
Uh, no, I was just gonna, um, sorry, Joel, this is Justin. Um, I guess, thinking down the line here, we potentially have workshops that were directed because of the design competition, right, in terms of some regard to historic preservation, building heights, zoning and whatnot. But the document already is what it is, and we'll still have those workshops. Those workshops aren't going to change anything material in the Comprehensive Plan, right?
Correct. There's, there's actually quite a bit of language in the comp plan right now that talks about those.
Sure.
Design guidelines.
So, yeah, I can, I can understand that, and we always have it as a record to go back to if we needed it as well, too. So, yeah, I don't, I don't think I see a problem with that.
Councilman Rule, any thoughts on that?
Councilwoman Rule speaking. Um, I kind of perceive the, the, um, the downtown plan as an unfinished plan, something that's still in motion, and I've had some conversations about this. Um, as, um, we did have a timeline for that to be furthered, so we'd get building massing, and we'd get code change out of that document. Um, but it doesn't feel like it's complete document to me at this time. So I feel like it's somewhat inappropriate to, um, have it appendixed, and as, um, whether you all know it or not, none of these documents are ever written in stone, so doesn't mean as soon as we get the building massing and the codes changed and that timeline that we've fallen behind on, um, uh, hopefully moving rapidly, um, that we can then, um, uh, put this as an addendum to the comp plan and bring it before council and, and adopt it into the comp plan. Um, so the comp plan is, in some ways, a fluid document that you can continue to add pieces and parts to as we added the whole airport chapter because it was required by the state, so, um, I'm okay with not having that in there and, um, adding it when it feels more complete and, um, for the purpose of, um, why I thought the competition was happening to get code change.
Any more discussion on page four, council members? Anything on page five? It's the table of contents. A mirror onto page two, effectively, into the document.
I guess, Mayor?
The Councilwoman Duquette.
May I back up a minute?
Sure.
So the charts, I'm just wondering, we've got, like, projected population charts. I'm thinking on climate change and climate resiliency, and would there be any interest in putting, um, projected temperatures and snowfall and precipitation? That's out there. I mean, there, there are websites that have our areas, um, projected. I'm just wondering if that would be. I'm not pushing for it. I'm just wondering if this would be a time to talk if that's necessary or wanted.
Well, um, I think it's appropriate to discuss it now. I, a lot of these charts are to give the reader, uh, an understanding of the setting and the history and the context of Sandpoint. Um, if there were a, uh, reputable source, um, and additional information, this is not in Idaho code, this portion. It doesn't say you have to have certain elements, uh, in regards to chart. It's more informative for the reader.
And I, I just, I do think that it's informative what is out there as projected rain, snowfall, temperatures, and, and it is out there on, um, you know, US climate places. I have a website, but.
Am I hearing you would, um?
If you think that's appropriate, if that's something that should be in there, I'm just kind of asking a question.
It's, it's your, your document. As a land use planner, I can tell you that it's, um, there's no prohibition or requirement of such information. Uh, if it's something, it's, this is effectively your, the council's document, so if you, um, feel like you would like to see that, I would, I would just, uh, mention it to your fellow council members here, and, um, if they're in agreement, um, uh, staff can collapse, collect, and add something like that.
Fellow council members, what do you think?
I mean.
Me being the new.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, go ahead, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Espiro.
No worries. I've been called worse. Um, I, I hear, uh, Councilwoman Duquette's, um, desire and appreciate the conversation. I personally don't think it's necessarily appropriate for this document. Another reason, we just talked about the waterfront design, the competition, how that's not complete. Uh, I would say it's the same thing with anything with climate change, or whatever you want to call it, global warming. You know, I remember growing up, and it was like, we're gonna enter an ice age, then it was, uh, global warming. Now it's climate change, so whatever seems to be appropriate, they change the wording because we just have no control over what's going, what it's gonna be like. So I don't think it's appropriate because I think it's ever-changing. That's my opinion, and I'm just throwing it out there since you asked, but thank you for hearing me.
It's fine. Just a question.
Councilwoman Rule or Councilman Dick, any thoughts on?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I can, I concur with Joel as well, too. I don't, I don't think it belongs in this document.
Okay.
Um, Councilwoman Rule speaking. I'm not quite sure, um, what Councilwoman Duquette is getting at. Um, planning doesn't necessarily, um, we can't plan what the temperature changes are gonna be, but if she's making a bigger, more global reference to protecting against, um, what we've seen to become, uh, more fire-intensive, um, western region of the United States, um, and thinking from a planning, um, perspective for the town to sort of take some of those, um, things into account. Um, you know, it, it seems like you could at some point build a whole entire chapter on something like that, but I don't think we need to do that at this point. I think we need to move on with this comp plan, um, and start working on our historic context and, and protecting our downtown, which is more an immediate, um, risk, and we can always circle back around and, um, talk to Planning Commission and have them potentially, if the public sees the need to, um, add planning language that would incorporate some of these different regional changes that we've seen, um, whether or not you agree with any of the other global issues. I don't think that's as important as saying, you know, we're gonna plan for a fire that might happen in our town. We're gonna plan for flood that might happen in our town. So, but I do think it is something that can be put, um, off now and, um, cycle back around to at a set date within the next year, potentially.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rule and, um, Councilwoman Duquette. Uh, chapter eleven discusses natural resources and hazards, and there may be some language you might want to add, um, or at least reference or mention, for example, um, as, as a goal or policy to work towards the adoption of a, you know, wildland urban interface fire mitigation.
And that is what I'm leading to is all the separate comments from the public.
Yeah.
Has alluded to a lot of climate language in here, and I'm just thinking that's just sets the stage for, but I'm fine holding on.
Right. Um, page two or three, we'll do them two at a time. I have anything that jumps out at me on these two? None, none? Page four or five?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Duquette.
On five, public participation is, is, would this be a place to say how we would have public participation? Or would that be someplace else?
This is referencing, um, the public participation that went into the development of the comp.
Okay, so it's already, what has already happened?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And just clarify, this is as of August, so this will get updated.
Okay. It will get updated with the comments that came on the.
No, it'll get updated with the numbers. We've had more community events, more online.
Okay.
Activities.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, page six or seven? Amy, do you have the ability to just interrupt if there are comments on a page? I assume there haven't been any.
Oh, um, up, up to now, no. Um, we have a comment on page seven uh, by John Garris, and that is up on the screen.
Uh, can you do that?
Your screen won't go into PowerPoint, Mom. Sorry, like, um, the PDF doesn't do like.
Urban Forestry Master Plan is a much more flexible document. Joel, I, I'll read this to you. It's a comment that says, "The urban forestry master plan is a much more flexible document than the comp plan. Even though we put the cart before the horse, the comp plan needs to make the foundational policy statement that the urban forestry master plan can rest upon."
Thank you.
Um, I really don't see, it is listed on page seven, uh, the urban, you know, relevant plans and studies. So I, I, I feel like, uh, his comment is incorporated already, so.
That was dated, um, the sixth of December, and we had those two other meetings after that, so.
Thank you. Uh, anything on page eight or nine?
On page eight, uh, there's a comment about this, um, image and that the citation is incorrect. We did confirm that this is the way it is cited on the University of Idaho site. Uh, but to avoid these issue, we are going to replace this with a sandborne map.
I just had a question on page eight, um, uh, the third paragraph, um, Northwest Company fur trader David Thompson was one of the first settlers to establish a relationship with tribes in the area. Uh, this may sound strange, but is it appropriate in today's world to accurately describe Mr. Thompson as the first white settler? I just don't want to offend anyone or leave anything out that's. And Amy, or Planning Commission, do you know, did, um, is that a respectful term to use, settler, uh, because we have included the Cowsbell and Foodney tribe, uh, throughout, um? Do we know of, uh, Heather? I know she has a relationship with the tribe. Is that the right language to be utilized when talking about, um, somebody who came into the area in the early eighteen hundreds? Do we know?
She hasn't identified that as an incorrect term.
I just, I just, I'm sensitive to it. I want to make sure that we get it right, and if, I might. I, I would think rather than using the term, and this is, uh, Planning and Zoning Commissioner Hastings speaking. Um, rather than use the term white, I would think that non-Indigenous would be a better term. That, that, that might, I like that. Yeah. Uh, can you check on that, um, Amy, and just make sure we're using the correct, um, proper language? Or that, it just jumped out at me. Anything else on page eight or nine? Uh, how about ten or eleven?
There was a public comment on page nine.
Who was that? Did you miss that?
The number ten.
Uh, on nine, it was, there was discussion in the narrative about, um, the tribes, but. the tribes, but this, uh, the comment is to add a, one of, a graphic on this bubble map. By acknowledging native cultures.
Prior to eighteen oh nine. Sort of a new bubble up top?
Yep, the ten, zero ten.
Indigenous. First Nations. Excellent. Uh, ten or eleven, anything on ten or eleven? Just going through the environmental characteristics, precipitation.
And it's, there's a comment that we don't identify for us from Canada and other countries, I think we say. As represented from across the nation.
The world? Is that preferred? Any objection to throwing across the world or broadening the tourism? Age twelve or thirteen? I, I just, um, I was hoping that we might be able to more accurately describe. When you read this, it feels like we're growing super, super fast. Um, the data in both the chart and in the bullet point ends up being between a one point seven and one point, one point five to one point seven percent growth over the last, annual growth over the last twenty years. Um, that's a pretty modest growth rate. It's actually below what our two thousand nine comp plan had projected. So I was just thinking we might add, break that down a little more clearly. So, uh, there's, there's just a more, a little bit more accuracy, facts from fiction of how fast we're actually growing. Um, it's there, but by calling it out at one point five percent per year or one point seven percent per year, it just, in my mind, it makes it a little more, um, real. Anyone object to?
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
So seventeen percent growth in ten years, one point seven percent, this one's here. Um, Sandpoint blew thirty-one percent over twenty years. That ends up being about one point five percent. These numbers seem really large when you look at them at a twenty, twenty-year clip.
Well, I think it's stating the, the timeframe in which that increase happened and then you can reference over there, I mean.
I just thought it worth pointing out, um, it is there, the information's there, so people can do the math, but.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Sprow.
Councilman Spiro, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm fine with either, but I would have to say I do agree with you is, uh, one thing I've learned from restaurant life or any part of life is a lot of us don't go and do the math. So I think the clearer we can be, the less confusion there can be, um, the better. My opinion, fine with either way though.
Hey? Um, any, anything on page thirteen?
There was also another comment, Mr. Mayor, sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, comment on page twelve, Amy?
Somebody had questioned how we were going to respond. Is the plan responding to an aging community population in terms of senior services, walkability, healthcare? Whether that goes right here, I don't know, but.
That would be, um, probably in chapter eight, we should pick that up. Which is, chapter eight is public facilities, services and utilities.
Let's go back to this. When we get there. We won't get there tonight.
Um, page thirteen, anything? Fourteen, fifteen, your photos. Sixteen or seventeen?
There is one on sixteen.
Thank you. Amy, can you?
Uh, they're questioning whether, because some of the outreach was done during COVID, that does, whether the comprehensive plan is. Whether the public engagement is done, and I would point out, the initial engagement was done in twenty nineteen, pre-COVID. So there was done, it was done through COVID as well, and it was done after COVID.
And the, the draft's been out there for a month and.
That was just a question.
We've got some, we've got some folks here tonight, so it's ongoing. Anything on eighteen or nineteen? This is where we're getting into our, uh, broad ranging, uh, vision. Brighter culture, resilient economy.
You're on to, hey Jason?
Uh, were there some comments on seventeen?
I don't think we're on seventeen, eighteen.
Mr. Mayor, uh, were we going to have, um, the audience comment, have a chance to comment after each chapter?
Yes.
Are we into chapter two already?
Yes. Oh, are we?
Yes.
Boy, I'm sorry, chapter two, I am so sorry, public. Is, is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak about the index and chapter one at this?
Do you want to skip, hello?
Um, I, it, it is our historical policy, so I'm sorry, yes.
Yep, my name's Mary Wilkos and I would support the recommendation to include the, um, data concerning climate. Um, uh, and the chart actually in the appropriate chapter, probably certain, the ones that deal with natural resources, because this is a forward-looking document. Um, and there are, um, scientific data available from no one other sources. So it sets a stage for climate resilience planning.
Thank you. Any other public comments on chapter one? Thanks for bringing that to my attention.
Didn't want anybody to get lost.
All right, so I think we're back to.
Please, no, we've got another comment.
Hi, I'm Katie Cox, um, not a resident, two nine nine Ravenwood Drive, uh, Sandpoint, Idaho. Um, with all due respect, I just want to note in the index, that steering committee did not exist. Even though I have reviewed, um, and our offices reviewed the plan and it's a great plan going forward, but I think that steering committee needs to be extracted from the beginning of the book.
And were you, your name is listed, uh, on that, uh, I believe, Mrs. Cox?
Yes.
Uh, so when you say that, you didn't have weekly meetings, multiple weekly meetings and?
No, we were never contacted about being on a steering committee. Many mem, I've contacted a number of people in, on that same list and, uh, none of us were ever contacted. Steering committee did not exist and, uh, yes.
Thank you for.
So if you could just take that out, so people don't reference it and ask us questions. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Cox.
I know I'm confused.
Thank you.
Um, well.
All I can say is there was a file of steering committee, it was called the steering committee. It will predates meeting and my involvement in the plan, but there were meetings held, there were minutes from those meetings. So that's why it's here.
Well, I think we want to accurately reflect, um, what transpired, so, uh, I think for the, 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 the final plan, we should just check those minutes and meetings. If it was one or two meetings, um, maybe we omit it if it was robust and there were consistent, uh, attendees. Um, we want, certainly want them listed accurately and we don't want people who didn't attend any, um, to be, um, asked questions.
Apparently my name's on there too, so, um.
Yes. As a steering committee member.
Right, I'll get with Amy and look at minutes and see. Um, I'm thinking that something happened within the COVID thing where people may have signed up and then COVID happened and, and so I, my memory is not that accurate, but if I can look at meeting minutes, it should jar me to remember where I was or was not. And I can get with Amy and clear that up and make the plan more accurate.
And Mr. Mayor.
I think we all in good faith wanted to do something and then our lives blew up and we had children to care for and other things to do.
Mr. Mayor, this is, uh, Commissioner Hastings speaking. Uh, for context, I know when I came on the commission in twenty nineteen, I think my first meeting is when we first started reviewing, uh, and updating this comprehensive plan. And this is the first time I ever heard, have heard of a steering committee. Okay. So since twenty nineteen, I've not heard of that steering committee. Thank you. Um, you would presumably be informed since you're the chairman or we're on the commission, so. Uh, we'll get to the bottom of that and make it accurate.
I don't know, it's on me.
Go ahead.
Jennifer Balls, City of Sandpoint resident, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Um, so I would also concur that the, the natural resources or planning or however it goes, that there is some sort of, um, group that gets together and speaks about the future in terms of whether it's fire or water or how the trees are taken care of in the whole region. Because we are not just the city of Sandpoint that we're planning, we're the whole county as well as living in this beautiful place that we have. Think it's really important that whether it's called blah, 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 or blah, 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 it's, it's more important of how we take care of the land. And that people get to know, how do we get involved?
Yeah, and that, I think, um, thank you for your comments and, uh, chapter eleven, natural resources and hazards and I don't have it verbatim, but I imagine there could be a, a goal or a policy that would be something like, um, you know, facilitate, support, build, um, um, a group. It's probably going to be our sustainability committee, I imagine, but, um, I took a note to make sure we add that in chapter eleven or at least discuss it. Any other public comment on chapter one? Thanks, everyone. Um, so chapter two, we're on page eighteen, nineteen, the, uh, comments vibrant culture and resilient economy.
There is on eighteen.
Thank you.
Amy, do you want to do these? Sorry, I don't, it's just I've got my computer up too. Do you want to be the one to?
Well, she's got the screen, so she can probably pull them up.
All right, eighteen, I don't think.
There's two on eighteen. Zero one five, yep.
Comment, zero one five. North Idaho's vibrant culture includes its Native American heritage and communities. Can we recognize their presence and contributions here too? Uh, and zero one six, at this time in our community develop, communities development, I urge all those in decision-making positions to put historic preservation at the top of the list, followed by protection of our natural environment and existing open spaces. Sandpoint does not need glitz and glamour. As a resident, our priority should be preservation and taking care of our existing and precious assets. Okay. Well, I know we have, um, addressed and mentioned, um, indigenous tribes, the Kootenai and others in the document so far and, uh, glitz and glamour. I don't see anything here calling for glitz and glamour. Uh, I see just the opposite. I see a plan that's calling for protection and respect of our existing character. Uh, unless I'm missing something, I think we haven't.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Rule.
Amy, um, so I know we have the town hall meetings, um, at the end of December and a lot of these comments are for the beginning of the December. Is there any, um, assumption that can be made that you've included a lot of these comments that came from the public that are earlier than those later town hall meetings? Or have these not really been processed?
These are all comments that would have occurred between November and December. Of it, when it was posted online is when these comments were.
But I know that you and I've had discussions, especially about the trees and other things and a lot of those comments had been included into the document. So.
Yep.
I'm just curious if we're going over things that you've already worked to include in the document after the comments were received.
Um, I, well, the, the comments that were addressed were ones that came up at the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing. And some of those were incorporated. Um, then we had additional comments, some of the same comments at the council hearing and you'll see those comments also in this plan, but a lot of these comments, um, were not addressed at the point where the planning and zoning made us recommendation.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, that's my understanding that these comments have not been incorporated into the draft that the public is reviewing or reviewing. All right, page nineteen, we are twenty percent through our project. Good job. Um, resilient economy, any comments on resilient, resilient economy?
Two comments. Um, again, the first one is a comment, I'm not, I don't know if there's anything that council can do to address it in the comprehensive plan. We talk about the need to support workforce housing, to create housing. And, and then I think the second one's really just, uh, affirming what we say in the document.
Joel, these are two comments, comments seventeen and eighteen that talk about the increase of housing prices, uh, rental prices and, how important affordability is and how our salaries in the service industry and education sector need to be competitive.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Yep. So resilient economy, I thought that read pretty well. Any, any comments, concerns, questions from council? Page twenty, uh, sustainable development.
Several comments on this page.
Can you make that a little bit larger?
Yeah.
Thanks. Comment nineteen through twenty-two. First is, uh, sustainability includes sustainable development, but also climate resiliency, food security, reduction greenhouse gases. Can this category, category and bullets be expanded to be more holistic and aspirational? Uh, the answer is they could be. Comment twenty, this particular aspect of the comp plan is at the top of my area of concern for this community. Twenty-one, uh, consider revising this bullet to foster accessibility, walkability. And twenty-two, please add wildlife habitats, habitats to first bullet. Um, that last one. That last one seems pretty easy. What's the council think about adding wildlife habitats to Sandpoint's natural beauty, open space and scenic views should be protected through thoughtful development patterns?
Where, Mr. Mayor, would you put that in that sentence? I agree with that, but I've been wondering how you want to word that.
You know, I think staff can wordsmith it if they get a general feel that there's consensus to add wildlife habitat.
Okay, because I have it written, so.
Would you like to see that added?
I think that's.
Yes.
Worthy.
Any council members object to adding wildlife habitat?
No.
I I think the sustainability aspect, a couple of people have hit on that. You know, this is a vision, these are the visions, this chapter, it might just be appropriate to add. Something about now that we've reconvened the Sustainability Committee, Commission, I forget which it is right now. You could say something something aspirational that like. Our Sustainability Commission is active and. Engaged in their work in Sandpoint.
On this page?
Yeah, this is, these are the visions. High level vision, then goals, then policies.
Mr. Mayor, but they haven't happened yet.
Correct.
Correct, so would it, is it appropriate to have that in the comp plan or?
Well, it's a vision. It would be a vision, we may not achieve our visions, but it would be a vision that addresses some of those comments. I know this is your thing, Pam, so feel free to get a little more touchy and aggressive if you want something added. Suggested.
I I do have questions on where we will put this. All the climate and because there is really no chapter, the natural hazards and resources. Or the hazards, not however it's worded, has some, but it doesn't really contain all of the issues.
Right.
That we could be seeing and are seeing. And I'm, and I guess that's my big question, where that, where will this go? I I can't see another chapter, but.
You could, so these are the visions, the way this will apply to the next four to 20 years. Is these visions, ideally the council and then the mayor looks at this document and says, this is what the people want. They want to see these things happen under a vision, the goals are maybe what those visions will accomplish and the policies are how we're going to get there. So. What you're describing, I think, I might have it wrong, is you want to see more of this. Active, functional effort being made to address sustainability in our community.
Yes.
So a vision might be. Create an active, vibrant Sustainability Commission.
Okay.
Which which adopts, which aspires to adopt a sustainability plan.
Is somebody writing that down?
Well. Wouldn't that be an actual implementation item in the appendix?
It would.
This is backing up several steps, it's.
It would.
It's.
But the visions and the implementations are tied together, so you have to have a vision to have something to implement.
So what you're looking for is a bullet point on this page dealing with broader sustainability. Correct?
Sure. That is my big question, how to put that in here? And I've made little marks where people's comments fit under under the goals in the different chapters. So maybe that'll be addressed when we get to those chapters and those goals.
Yeah, under the vision is, the vision is the big broad.
Okay.
Push, like, these are things we're hoping for that in 20 years we have happening here.
And I would hope that we do have a.
I would recommend if that's your hope, Councilwoman Duquette, that you suggest right now that that be language to that effect be added.
Please add language to that effect.
Well, I would like.
I would like.
You've got several other council members you're going to have to work with on that, so. Council.
Mr. Mayor.
I don't.
Council members, if there was a another bullet point that was aspirational for a sustainability commission to be engaged. And. Active in the community, would anyone have objections with that sort of additional bullet point?
No.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Espiro.
Councilman Espiro, yeah. Would you mind, maybe Councilwoman Duquette can answer this? Can you please define exactly what you mean by sustainability? Because I think some people might have different understandings of that word, it'd just be helpful with me moving forward.
Okay, it encompasses a lot, but basically it's it's taking what's going on now. The past and the present in building and actions. If anybody has a better way of sharing in the of the audience, it is, it is what works, past, present, future. And but it's broke, there's a lot of little things, like if you talk about building.
Work work with what, we're talking about building, are we talking about?
It.
Saving trees, like I still understand.
Yes.
The UN's definition from 1987 says, meeting. Sustainability is defined as meeting the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generation to meet their own needs.
You've done a great job of that, yeah, okay, thanks.
So I, I think adding a bullet here that empowers future and current council to. And gives that Sustainability Committee the authority from the comp plan to do this work is is what I'm hearing you're you're looking at.
Yes.
And I didn't hear any objection to the addition of such a description, so I think staff can work on something like that. If I might. Yes, this might be a little wordsmithing, they would accomplish some of that, this is Commissioner Hastings speaking, the first bullet there. If instead of saying protected through thoughtful development, it said protected through sustainable development. That would give us, that's a visionary statement that would give a lot of latitude for things to be incorporated within.
Thank you.
I think that bullet would really. Empower the Sustainability Commission to.
Mission.
To do their work. I've got some concerns with the second bullet there. And again, I'm I'm just speaking as probably a non-voter on this. Well, I'm a resident, but I won't vote when you adopt it, I don't think. It's, it says growth close to daily needs and existing services should be prior prioritized. And future city expansion managed to preserve natural features and ensure services are not overburdened. I get that. My thinking was changing the end of that sentence. Where it says future city expansion is managed to preserve natural features. And limits urbanization of adjacent lands. Meaning we wouldn't be sending our water and sewer out to adjacent lands that aren't in the city. Again, just my thought, and then the next bullet. It says a mix of land uses and high quality development that foster accessible and enduring neighborhoods should be encouraged. I said accessible and traditional neighborhoods should be encouraged. Because it strikes me that as we urbanize and densify. Many of the neighborhood patterns in that fabric that so many people were attracted to Sandpoint by are actually being. Changed pretty dramatically by smaller lot sizes and other things. If anyone wants to run with that, feel free, if not, we'll leave it.
Going to add, Mr. Mayor, that this is where somebody's comment was to add fosters accessibility and walkability. And I don't know if that's wordsmithing again, or that was the comment for that bullet.
Yeah, fosters accessible and walkable.
Accessible, however you want to put it, accessibility and walkability.
And walkable neighborhoods.
Sure.
Should be encouraged.
Accessible, because that would include accessible for all.
Yep. Council members, any any conflict with replacing enduring with walkable?
Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk.
I believe Councilman Dick has stepped away.
Oh, he has.
Therefore, we don't have a quorum of council currently, if we could perhaps take a short break.
We can take a short pause. We reconvene, we have a quorum of the council, just looking at just some slight wordsmithing to that third bullet on page 20. To enhance the description, to make sure we're talking about pedestrian. Or multimodal access. Any other comments on page 20 from the council? Or I think we got them all. Get all those on the.
Just, we were going to add wildlife habitat to the first bullet.
Yep. We're going to add a new bullet. Page 21, responsive government, any comments from the council or per the notes on responsive government?
There are four comments.
Yes.
Whether they're.
Joel, we're on page 21, responsive government, efficient and reflect community priorities. This person appears to want to add that. Comment 24, communication and collaboration, first one's to add that. Comment 25. We won't go over the the water under the bridge. That I think has been addressed, but there's some concern about how we've done things in the past. And question 26. More aggressive public outreach. Hey. So do we want to expand responsive government to? I mean, we say strong relationships with the community, with regional partners should be formed. To facilitate a culture of open and effective communication. We need to beef that up or add a new bullet point in our vision.
I was looking at 23.
This is page 20, 21.
Right, but.
The vision of responsive government.
Comment.
All all three, all.
There's four.
For those comments.
Okay. I'm trying to find out where they go.
Add a bullet. Under our vision that, I feel like a lot of that is in here. We talk about efficiency, city management should be efficient.
And somebody added, and reflect community priorities.
Okay. Would you like that added to the? Last bullet on page 21, Councilwoman Duquette?
Yes.
Councilman, or Mr. Mayor, Councilman Espiro. Yeah, what does that mean? Like which, like South Sandpoint, Middle Sandpoint, what type, like, what does it mean, community priorities? That'd be helpful for me if we can define terms on that.
That's a great question, Councilman.
It's a, it's a, it's a big community and I talk to a bunch of different types of people every single day and they all have a different opinion on what they think a priority should be. So just keep that in mind as we just throw language out there, same thing with affordable housing, like I remember when I first ran six years ago, so everybody talked about every year, every year. And nobody could ever give me a defined, clear definition of affordable housing, and I still don't have one today. And we just throw words out there sometimes, well meaning, of course, and I have no idea what they even mean. So I just would like to have terms defined before I feel comfortable adding anything. Other council members may feel different and that is totally fine.
Thank you, Councilman Espiro, I would just put forth that this comp plan, once adopted, is effectively the community priority. As embodied in the plan. So it may not be necessary because. All good leaders should be looking at this comp plan.
Yeah, it just feels redundant in a way. But, but anyways, that's my two cents, thank you.
Any, anyone feel strongly on and reflects community priorities?
Just sharing public comment.
Okay, we will not add that because I, I think it's pretty well, I mean, the comp plan really spells out our priorities. And finally, the last page on Chapter 2, we are flying compared to 2009. Livable communities. It was a little more exciting then, people were really up in arms. Any council members have comments about the livable community vision?
Four comments on this one.
First comment, walking and cycling should be.
Refers to down here.
Bullet, top bullet.
The bottom one, actually.
The last bullet, cycling should be recognized as essential to healthy and. Equitable community. As both recreational pursuits and viable means of transport.
Buildings up above, bullet point three.
Yeah. I think we have walkability covered there. Can you see the rest of those comments? Comment 28, I've learned how to navigate city streets, walking and it's not easy with sidewalks disappearing and reappearing as I walk around town. It's not so bad in the summer, but in the winter I mostly give up. This needs to be a priority of our students, of our students who like walking. Who left walking to school in the winter. When snow is piled up and no place to walk except in the street, an example of this is on Lincoln, there's a nice walking sidewalk in the winter and it's covered in snow. Pushing walkers into the street, okay. Don't really see an action item there. 29, address proactively monitored to keep pace with community needs. Do we know what?
It's referring to.
The top, oops, did I just?
Oh.
It's on the first bullet.
Just keep going up. Oh, you just hit the link? All right, it's that second one.
I think it's the top bullet, 29.
For housing needs for Sandpoint's full-time residents, workforce should be proactively addressed.
And and they want us to add monitored, monitored, is that what they said?
Proactively monitored to keep pace with community needs. Sorry, it's just I've got it big and bold in front of me.
What say you, council members? Addressed and proactive.
Where it says workforce should be. Proactively addressed and monitored, she wants to add and monitored to keep pace with community needs.
I mean, it strikes me the community's needs for affordable housing are kind of like Councilman Espiro mentioned. Not a very clearly defined things, I've heard some people say our community just needs enough. Affordable housing for our residents who have jobs here and for our employers and our government. I've heard others say there should be enough affordable housing here, so anyone who wants to move to Sandpoint can do so affordably. So it's a pretty wide chasm there.
I don't think the word affordable is in there, sorry, I'm just, I don't see it.
Oh, I'm sorry, the housing needs for Sandpoint full-time residents and workers should be proactively addressed.
And somebody wanted and monitored to keep pace with community needs.
Yeah, that just seems. Yeah, that just seems vague to me.
Okay.
Um.
Well, it's sorry.
Monitor, I guess, is fine, but.
Well, and, and how are you gonna do that? And should we do that? Because we follow development, we know how many units are coming online and what kinds of developments. I mean, we don't necessarily, unless it's government-funded, to have control over price point, but we do monitor development.
Well, and we also, you know, to keep pace, this comp plan should be updated in seven years. Um, eight years. Um, so it is dynamic, as Councilwoman Rule mentioned. I feel like we've addressed that, and we do address that as a city. Um, I appreciate the, the comment, but it's, I think it's happening. And is that any other?
Thirty.
Thirty. Thirty, yes, especially walkability, supporting public transit, and even expansion of services. I think that's that third to last bullet.
Thirty is, she's got it kind of in the middle of the page. Like, community connectivity, livability, and health.
Mm-hmm. It's for public transportation, is that what they're asking?
I think the fourth bullet is where it might be.
I mean, it's talking about multimodal transportation investment. I mean, multimodal transportation investment covers.
Oh, unless it's.
Covers that.
Bubble is kind of mixed.
I think it's just more of a comment than anything. It was like an agreement.
Yeah, it said, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. Agreeing.
Any, um, council want to make any corrections or amendments on that sheet of comments? If not, I'll take public comment on chapter two. Again, this is the vision. Next, we will get into our more granular aspects.
Um, I wanted to go back to that first, the first part of the vision about, um, sustainable. I thought that, um, with all due respect, the commission is not part of a vision. The commission should be charged with implementing the vision. And I really liked the definition that you read out, and I thought if we put in that, um, very first bullet, that's not thoughtful development, it's sustainable development, and then actually reference what the definition of that is. And I'm Wesley Carey, by the way.
Thank you.
It's back on twenty, like, twenty.
Correct. Any other public comment on chapter two? Councilwoman Rule.
I would add, um, sustainable development patterns.
Okay. That first bullet drawing could be, I think, I, I had that as, yeah, we were gonna do that.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if you put it in there.
Or that there was no huge objection after we defined it.
Yeah.
Um.
Fine, just clarifying.
Excellent. Um, so maybe that new bullet on twenty, when we, when staff wordsmith it, it's, uh, a little more proactive than just referencing an active sustainability committee. And then when it comes to in draft, you can lop it or adopt it or modify it at such time.
And Mr. Mayor, did we want a definition of sustainable in there somewhere? Uh, people who are.
You know, Councilwoman Duquette, I, uh, we don't have a definitions page, but, um.
We have appendix definitions. I'll check if we may already have it.
Okay. Good idea.
Okay. Moving on to chapter three. Right, page twenty-six. Um, so this is, uh, chapter three, uh, titled, Community Character and Design. Uh, any comments from the council on twenty-six or twenty-seven? Pretty much talking about the historic places and our aspirational, um, protection and zones where historic, uh, properties would be dressed. Um, twenty-eight or twenty-nine, arts and culture. This is actually more just of a background.
There's one comment on. Twenty-nine, I don't, oh, there it is, can hardly see it on the picture. But it's a comment.
It's just a positive comment.
Okay. We will just.
We like the positive.
Appreciate those and move on. Uh, any comments from the council on thirty or thirty-one? Urban forest and Sandpoint's arts, culture, and historic preservation.
There are three comments for, uh, urban forest.
Comment thirty-two. This next to last sentence is false. The urban forest as defined above includes all privately owned trees. The master plan only mentions private trees once in a list of possible design standards. The master plan is woefully inadequate. The bulk of the master plan consists consultant who wrote it saying that there are, these are the kinds of things the city needs to think about. There are very few assertive, clear, actionable statements. Constantly vacillates between strategic plan, policy, and management plan actions, and never lands on either. Comp plan needs to stop leaning on it with all of these, these, don't worry. All this kind of stuff is covered in the urban forest master plan. So this person is saying that they don't feel like the urban forest master plan is sufficient, and, um, they're saying the statement is false. Next to last sentence is false. To ensure the city's urban forest is valued and protected, an urban forestry management plan was adopted in twenty-twenty-two.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Law.
That individual might be present in the room.
Okay.
Speak to that.
Um, I don't, is that individual there?
No.
Yeah, do you want, do you want to speak to? Sure, we're, we're here.
This meeting's about.
We're here right now.
Yeah, John Gaddis, resident of Sandpoint.
Hi, Jim.
Um, yeah, so by false meaning, it talks, it says the plan is to protect public trees.
Yeah.
And, but you see in my comment, the urban forest management plan specifically does not. Okay, it doesn't talk about the community forest. It's almost exclusive to right-of-way and park trees. So that's where I.
Okay.
This statement.
We do not want false statements.
At best is, uh, misleading.
So, Mr. Gaddis.
Yes, Councilman Woman.
Is it that the statement should stay in here, and the other plan should be corrected to include protecting?
I would love to have another hash at that plan. I mean, it was better than no plan when I testified in favor of adopting it, but it leaves a lot to be desired, yes.
Um, for context, this portion of, uh, chapter three has really given us background information. Um, and I think that background information needs to be accurate, and I see what you're saying. Um, it's saying that we've basically done this to ensure we adopted the plan.
Right, we're, we're, that was my first on page or chapter one or whatever in the appendices or the initial Roman numeral letter pages. And that was my kind of, okay, this plan, just listing, see, urban forest management plan, see that plan, it doesn't say anything, it's just this. Um, it's a consultant saying, these are the kinds of things you put in an urban forest management plan, think about these. It doesn't actually give us Sandpoint anything we can apply. It's a textbook, if you will.
Mr. Gaddis, would it be appropriate for us to change this station, this sentence to reflect that we need to implement a new urban forest plan to make it more correct?
I would, yeah.
Because we want in our comp plan, the understanding that we're gonna speak to protecting our urban forest. So we should wordsmith this in such a way to say that we need to update our current plan to reflect a true protection for our urban forest.
Or Councilman Law, I would even suggest to say that our initial plan adopted in two thousand twenty-two is inadequate, inadequate to protect the urban forest.
And needs to be updated.
I don't know, that making a value statement about the quality of the current plan is appropriate, but just, uh, to get at, or don't say that the current plan does this. I wouldn't, we, we can say we want to do that, but don't say the, an urban forest management plan does, you know, is involved in doing any of that, because it doesn't right now.
So.
Right, just take it out of there, maybe.
Update in some form.
Maybe just.
It's a first step and needs to be built upon.
Again, this is historical kind of background, so maybe it just says, an urban forest management plan was adopted in twenty-twenty-two.
That's a true statement.
That's a true statement. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gaddis. Any, um, objection to just simply stating the fact and not suggesting that it is going to ensure that our forest, the existing plan ensures that our urban forest is valued and protected? And this is just the history.
The fact that we have it gets us farther than if we didn't have it.
Yeah.
I think we need a sentence in there that says that we need to clearly work toward protecting it by updating the plan.
Yeah, that would probably be in the goals and objectives. This is, this is more the.
And the goals and objectives, John.
If.
Be ready.
If I might add some context, I know that we can get, I believe it's in the later chapter, uh, this is Commissioner Hastings speaking. Uh, in one of the later chapters, some of the wordage that we added to address this was that the canopy of Sandpoint would be increased. So that the canopy, the, and which would certainly address the issues you have about the urban forests, that we would have an increase in the canopy rather than just protecting it. So. But that is already in this plan, further down the wording about increasing the forest canopy, that it comes in the later chapter. Council members, I think for just the background, historic, three paragraphs of where we're at, I think it's most accurate just to say an urban forestry, forestry management plan was adopted in twenty-twenty-two. Um, I think that gives us the clarity of what was adopted. People can debate or discuss its value, but it's at least factual. Somebody reading it would say, oh, they have a, they have a plan. And then in our goals and policies, we can.
We need to improve it.
Yeah.
Because I think it implies that you're doing something, and if we're not doing it, it's problematic. So unless it's clearly stated in those goals and where we're headed, then.
Yep, well, we're about to jump into that in just a second.
Councilwoman Rule, I, and Mr. Mayor, um, I think in reference to that is the discussion was the private property owners with their trees and how legally we cannot, we have this huge discussion, Zach was there, um, and how we cannot implement a plan telling private property owners what to do with their trees on their land. So that was where, um, there's that fine line of what the city can do with this canopy or this urban forest master plan as far as private property rights.
Right. I think you can state it in a comp plan, because it's visionary. If you tried to put it in code, I totally agree with what you're saying. It would be a lot more, you know, legal issue coming, but to say that you want to do it, whether it's private or public, it doesn't really have any teeth as far as a code and enforcing with a private property owner. So I think for us as a community to say, we really want that, whether we can have it or not. As far as code and law goes.
In reference to what John was saying about, um, you know, the private, private property rights with the trees, in that route, there's just some context.
And we'll get into that.
We've discussed that.
The goals, the goals and objectives in just a second. This is again, just saying, this is what the city has for arts, culture, um, urban forest. Uh, and finally, Sandpoint Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Plan. Um, so it's really just bringing the reader up to speed on what we have right now. Um, not really qualifying its values and how those values apply to our goals. Um, any comments on page thirty-one regarding?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Arts, culture, and historic, yes?
On page thirty, I had, um, circled it, written something, and I don't know if it was the last time that we talked about this at council or.
What did you circle?
Um, Neighborhoods was a former program.
Mm-hmm.
Is it still a program?
Uh, I believe it is, um.
Well, we had it as a current program, and we were told it wasn't a current program, and then we put it in past tense, and then we were told, well, the funding is still there. I just don't think it's as active as it was in the past, but I think the funding is still there. So, I don't know how you wanna.
So is a program created to provide trees? Instead of was a former program?
Um.
May be our foresters that.
We'll, we'll clarify that is was. Amy, can you note that, or Sarah? I know there's funding in it, in the budget. Um. Page thirty-two, uh, design guidelines. Uh, my only comment on page thirty-two is that last sentence, um, this is where it says the, the, it's talking about the downtown design competition. The competition process began in early twenty-twenty-three, and the results will be incorporated as appendix E in the comp plan. So I would say we can still work on that competition document, but, um, per our other discussion, that sentence should probably come out. Anyone object to that? Excellent. Um, anything, uh, from the written comments on page thirty-two?
There are three.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, which sentence did you just suggest to?
Uh, the last sentence on page thirty-two.
Change that. Okay, thank you.
Um, can you? This is tough, let's see. Comment thirty-five, uh, clear and specific architectural design standards for commercial districts need to be developed throughout workshops and community engagement. This should be stated explicitly in the implementation plan, and it's not to be confused with the waterfront design vision. The latter is a vision that might help orient, but it itself is not suitable for the workshop as a community discussion, you needed to pin down architectural and design standards. Um, again, this is talking about the, where we're at, the history of, of what documents we have. Um, I agree, uh, those, those comments can be applied later in the comp plan. Comment thirty-six, um, would like to reiterate the comments adjacent, adjacent made by Maureen and Deb about more explicit explanation of the waterfront design competition and how it is to be viewed and implemented in future planning efforts. Oh, Deb, you're coming on these.
Yeah, I'm actually doing, I wanna bring it around.
Oh, look at that.
I can.
The waterfront competition plan should not be included as appendix E to this plan. I tell it has been embedded by the book. All right.
I think we took that off.
Excellent. Um. So this is the fun stuff, goals and objectives. So this is where the rubber hits the road, page thirty-three. Council, any comments on page thirty-three, goals and objectives? Goal one, character and identity. This would be a spot, um, if the council so desired, where we might put a goal or objective to, um, implement or foster creative ways to preserve open space in the area of city impact. Such as, uh, consider transfer of development rights. Reserve adjacent open space. Council has no comments. We'll go on to goal two, historic preservation.
There are public comments, sorry.
On, on goals and objectives, goal one? Thank you, Pam, you are keeping me on here.
Forty-one, yeah. Public comment?
Public comments on goal one, comment forty-two and forty-one.
Kind of split.
Forty-one, there will be no way to maintain a scenic view as the buildings are allowed to go sixty-five feet, especially along First Avenue or across San Creek building heights. The downtown core must be restricted as well as the aesthetics of buildings being constructed so that they fit within the historic look and feel of our downtown and don't stick out like a sore thumb. And can I see comment forty-two as well? Like the building on Cedar and Fifth, question mark. If you can't think of which building I'm referencing, there's your answer to what standard one may ask whose idea of unique character, unique as the Misty Mountain Furniture or the new luxury condos, question mark. Yeah, good comment. Those are the balancing points. So I think what they're referring to is under goal one, bullet A, ensure that all commercial, single-family and multifamily development respect the town's unique character in architecture, thoughtful design and site planning.
Density, thoughtful density.
Oh, thank you, thoughtful density. Again, these are goals. They're not the actual zoning. The zoning would actually be where the rubber hits the road. This is the guide, the Planning and Zoning Commission and elected officials. It is a bit vague, the language could be interpreted a few ways depending on how many lawyers you got in the room. Counsel have any comments on the public comments or desire to make any changes to goal one?
It it is, I mean, throughout the engagement process, people talk about maintaining community character. The downtown design competition was one attempt at trying to define what that is, which the workshops, the public workshops to happen further is, you know, what is downtown's character? What is our historic character? What does that mean? So this is a broad objective, but it is reflecting the comments we've gotten through engagement. So when we get to code, we've got to define what it is we mean. But this is saying people feel strongly that Sandpoint is has its own unique character and we want to protect that.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. But, yes, Mr. Remar, planning and zoning. Anyway, on A, you're not going to do that without an architectural review committee, which you don't have, do you?
No, you could do that without an architectural review committee. You would presumably the planning commission would adopt zoning that had bulk dimensional height, you know, other details related to the zoning that you'd have to meet, which we already we have today. But whether those need to be tweaked, that would be the work of the planning commission.
So that'll be a dogfight down the road.
Well, right now in our commercial zones, you already have, you can't, you have to have walls that protrude every fifty feet. You have to have glass windows on the ground floor. You can't use a variety of materials that are viewed as inconsistent. You can't use tilt-up concrete. So we do have a lot that attempts to maintain our unique character, where we in the views of this commenter, some of our new buildings don't don't match.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Yep, I mean.
Make sure you're bold.
And plus with Heather Upton, because she was part of or working with planning and zoning with her, that's what she does.
Yep.
So I I hope the continuation of her work because it's very important because that's what the community had asked for was to maintain that historical character and she's she was helping us with that.
Yes, yes. And just for the public's benefit, I'll share that I think the best way if the city or the community desires to do that is through the creation of a historic district. You know, we just saw it actually, Commissioner Brenner has a copy of a house bill regulating short-term rentals. And this house bill is a parallel example of what could happen if we actually go too far on our zoning. A state representative decided that Ketchum and Sandpoint go too far in regulating short-term rentals. And this house bill that you should contact Sage Dixon about it proposes to strip cities of all rights to control anything with a short-term rental. So that same thing can happen to land use and zoning if we go too far. That's why the best way to address that is to do creation of a historic district because then there's justification for for those.
Which is planned.
Yeah, well, it's a desire. It's a desire for sure.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilwoman Rule.
So these goals are relative to the comment I made at council about staying on that timeline to get those downtown codes changed, which we originally had as an April deadline. And because of this goal, that's why I believe it's so important
Absolutely.
to get to where the teeth are.
Yep. Yep, it's A. Any other council comments on page thirty-three, historic preservation? Goals, I think it's well-written. Any public?
There's a lot of public comment.
This would be under goal two.
Right.
Which which ones are they?
Comment thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, requiring new structures to fit in with the current historic look and design of downtown Sandpoint is critical. This is the gateway to Sandpoint, visitors and residents when first entering town. We cannot and should not have a four-story ultra-modern structure along the streets of our historic downtown and destroy the entire aesthetic of our beautiful town. Although I give thumbs up on the adjacent comments regarding visual character, a simple thumbs up does not fully express my support of that comment. We really need to encourage a comprehensive way to enhance the visual character of downtown buildings. The condo on the corner of Cedar and Fifth is a classic case of how not to provide consistent visual character. We have opportunity to implement this concept with a vacant hole in the ground on the corner of First and Bridge. Let's not let that opportunity get away from us. And another one here. Defining the massing and setbacks here is very important to maintain existing qualities of sandpoints downtown. Ones that allow daylight to the sidewalks and streets and visual connections to the surrounding mountains through the downtown just drinking the economy. Downtown has the ability, capacity to densify without going up to sixty-five or fifty-five feet, especially along First Ave and Cedar. The overall massing should step down to the water instead of creating an overbearing wall similar to what you now see with seasons. Hey. One more? Forty-one?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. We're now on goal to historic preservation districts, but those are good numbers.
All right, we jumped. So we already addressed forty-one, forty-one. Three would be the next.
Hang on. Two. His comments. Forty.
Madam Clerk, is it possible to take the video off the right side so we get a full screen of this, just out of curiosity?
I can move this, but this is.
So we're going thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty. Oh, they're not singing quick. I got you. They're not.
Thirty-eight through forty-five.
Yes, more or less.
Yeah, forty-three, forty-four, forty-five. Where were we? We were on forty-one.
Hey, I read forty-one. Awesome. Yes, we I read that one. I read that one. How about forty-four? Here we go. Support goal number two. One E, your architectural design standards in the appendix. The mutation of the table recommend this as standalone early action item more explicitly. It's not named currently for commercial areas. Suggest either one, add the words architectural and design standards to the list in the first item in the table or even better make new line item in the table as follows. And I'll let you folks read that. I assume you can read that.
I think this is already the direction.
It feels like it. Okay, and can we see forty-five there? Jumps around, I guess. On forty-five, recommend further definition of districts within the historic downtown core through community involvement and outreach. Yes, that's what we're going to do. Architectural solution approach is appropriate. Rainier district or near the post office may be desirable along First and Cedar, vice versa. Appropriate variety, appropriate variety within a district context can enhance our mountain-like town character using historic materials and forms, but also embrace the hearty and creative independent spirit that founded this area rather than an overlay themed set of guidelines. Yes, we've all been to Leavenworth probably and know what theme towns are like. It's a it's a balance, I guess. Maybe we want to be a theme town. Council members, I feel like is a goal, goal to historic preservation incorporates all that and I don't have anything. Anyone?
B has a comment, but it's going to be on the next page.
Oh, can you go on to G, honor standpoint's history through interpretive signage, historic plaques, arts and public displays? G, so that would have been commented fifty-two.
Yeah. Above, wants to honor standpoint's Native American.
Can you just click on it?
Contributions.
No, unfortunately.
I don't see.
The next page.
Oh, it goes on to the next page, fifty-two, honor standpoint's Native American and historic contributions to community. Well, I think we're splitting hairs, but counsel, if you want to change that, I know. All right, I hear no action. Moving on to goal three, urban forest. Any comments from the council on goal three? It was a chapter four.
Public comments, just saying.
Pam, have you read those?
The public comments? Yeah, but I but I couldn't tell you right now what they say.
If there were some, and maybe as we proceed, because we're not going to finish this tonight, it's it's almost eight.
I think heritage trees were a biggie in this one.
And I guess I'd like to just pause for a second and say two things. One, I don't, we're not going to finish today, but maybe on our next session, which we should be able to finish it. If there are public comments that you feel strongly about, instead of going through them all and reading them all, we'll just
Okay.
have people move to amend language as appropriate. And then the next one, council members, it's seven fifty. Shall we set a time for conclusion? We're just about at chapter four. Should we try to get through chapter four, land use and growth? And then follow tonight?
Without oppression.
Oh, two-hour meeting. Is that right? Madam Clerk was it scheduled for two hours? Okay, excellent. So we have about ten more minutes. We can get through this chapter.
I would be willing to stay, but I have a little fast action for anybody who's
Oh, yeah.
children to call. I'm going to manage this evening. I have a date with my senior.
All right, so.
Did not pay attention to the comments.
Well, no, 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 we'll we'll finish this chapter right now. We'll finish this chapter doing how we're doing, but when we pick this back up, we'll we'll have you bring public comments that you feel
Okay, after this.
worthy of or needed discussion.
Okay.
So finally, let's look at the public comments on urban forestry. So that's comments. Forty-six through fifty.
Three?
Goal three.
Five.
Subsidy for owners to manage redwood trees or hazard trees on their property would lead to safer roadways and sidewalks. Okay. Comment forty-seven, add item F, a policy statement. Ensure ensuring heritage trees is distinct community asset that is sought to be protected. Include a broad definition here in the appendix. Interesting. The next person agrees, hold heartedly. Forty-eight, recommend adding a new bullet to the top of the list. Update the two thousand and nine mature tree inventory. Actively involve and solicit nominations for local citizens.
That is an action item in the appendix already.
Excellent. Forty-nine, add goal F, encourage preservation of heritage trees for their cultural, aesthetic, environmental, economic benefits, the long-term health vitality of our city. And fifty. Add definition to appendix B, terms and definition, heritage tree. Did you make that change, Amy? Yeah.
No, the commission made changes at their public hearing based on the comments of regarding heritage trees. The change, the comments were made again at the council hearing and they've been made again in this document. So the changes the commission made apparently have not addressed what the comments of the public.
And if I could add, this person does not live in the city. Sorry, out of state. This person lives out of state. Just for clarification.
Commenters does, yes.
And can we see?
Daughter of resident.
Can we see fifty-one, two?
Amy, is that in the appendix with the definitions, heritage tree? Is what they pretty much wanted was a definition of what a heritage.
Yeah, we get to add it to the appendix. Where we have other, but I think the concern was and we can put it as a placeholder and then say will be reviewed by the Tree Commission and Arts, Culture and Historic Preservation Commission because we may have more specific things that we want in our community than just pulling it from Moscow.
Okay, fifty-one doesn't really, that's hashing old old history. And it seems to me that the statement in item B here is referring specifically to tree planting near intersections and parallels, et cetera. Okay. Can I see comment fifty-two?
That's not included in that.
Honor standpoint's Native American. Yeah. Fifty-three, yes, education about how trees work, so many levels for quality, life and livability. I agree. Fifty-four, I like adding the term heritage trees, this language. Okay. Fifty-five, great to require use existing vegetation and construction of parking areas where feasible. Boy, okay, that would be hard, but it'd be great, okay? Excellent. Mr. Mayor, let's start with Commissioner Hastings. Okay, and this should just be a possible solution to some of these comments when I'm looking under urban forest, bullet E, which says educate and engage the public to improve understanding of the urban forest's value to the community. And we might have something in there, particularly the the unique value of heritage trees. Yeah, because there are words in there and and it's gives us an aspirational goal without being specific. Heritage trees. Does that sound, council members? Any objections?
Could you read that again for me, please? Sorry.
E would now read educate and engage the public to improve understanding of the urban forest value to the community, period, particularly the unique value of our heritage trees. I hear no objection to that. And finally, arts and culture. Councilwoman Rule.
I was again going to ask Mr. Gaddis, since we have him in the room, if he had any comment relative to his comment.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, it'll save us if we can be succinct now. We'll just do it right now.
Yeah, John Gaddis again. Yeah, and the, the goal here, the reason me and others in the community have had to repeat ourselves, or not had to, it felt necessary to repeat ourselves, is that we're unsatisfied with what planning and zoning changes were made after that first go-around. So yes, we've said a lot of the same things, again, because what we'd like to do is see it in the body, not just in the implementation table. So there were, there was some movement in what we feel is in the right direction, but it's not far enough. I'd like to see in this main body. And this is essentially the constitution of the city, right? These are our meta-values here. I just, we don't want a footnote. Heritage tree is more of an educational thing. It's sort of a, you know, on a pedestal, this tree on a pedestal in regards to how we value our urban forest.
Thank you, Mr. Gaddis. We've got two more goals, and then we'll open it up, the chapter to the public in, in the room here and online. Arts and culture, any comments from questions, changes from council on that section? Or gateways and gathering places? Hearing none. Any public comment on those last two goals, excuse, goal four and goal five?
There's a couple on goal five.
Fifty-six and fifty-seven, it looks like. Fifty-six, nothing this has been done for now. Goals of this nature should be near the bottom of the priority list until critical infrastructure needs have been addressed. Okay? Recommending deleting historic from bullet A. I think residents of Sandpoint value their neighborhoods whether they are historic or not, and would like to see these community values and aspirations applied equally throughout town. I appreciate that comment. I think most would agree, but there is a unique aspect to historic neighborhoods which have historic buildings in them. All right, I hear no further council comments on those two. I'd like to open it up to the public in the audience to speak to chapter three. Desire. Chapter three again is community design. Community character. You miss anything? Too much? Not enough?
I'm Christine Moon, and I'm a city resident. And I would just like to ask a question about the vision badges. I'm just going to call them badges that are on the goals and objectives, the little round circles that are by goals one through five.
Yeah.
And almost all of them, I think all but one has sustainable development. And I'm having trouble making the connection between some of those points and sustainable development. And, and maybe it's a, an issue with our difficulty with defining sustainable.
Yeah.
But I, I would like someone to go through and see whether that actually applies to each one of this, if the vision of sustainable development actually applies to each one of those goals and objectives.
Thank you, Ms. Moon. Amy, do you have any, is there any empirical evidence, or did the consultant discuss with you how those badges were allocated? I know it looks nice, and it's pretty cool to flip through, but maybe we just eliminate those badges if they're confusing people.
I actually think they're helpful myself, but let's see. So is the question specific to goal five, gateways and gathering places? Or is it just in general, why there's this, why sustainable development appears where it does?
Looking at the, the points under sustainable development, it doesn't seem that they were.
None of them, or?
Well, I think they just need to, I'm not, I, I, I need to look at it carefully before I am in. So I just think it needs to careful.
Yep, we'll take a look at it.
Any other public comments on chapter three? Thirty-five pages. Ellie, please.
I'm Ellie Sestas, and as the Chair of the Arts, Culture, and Historic Preservation Commission, I'm actually really pleased with how the arts, culture, and historic preservation is woven through this document. And I also want to go back to the steering committee thing. One of the good things about being lazy and not deleting your emails is I have a lot of emails from early 2020 for the steering committee and that group of fourteen that were included in the refix there. So, yeah.
Yeah, I think Amy will be just getting with you to try to understand that we, so we have an accurate reflection of what actually occurred and what, what actions that steering committee took.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Ellie, and thanks for all your hard work on this. I know you're a huge piece of this, so.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Last comment about the urban forest section, section and heritage trees. I'm just wondering, is there any way to do some incentives or special, whatever that goes towards, especially all of these ADA units that are being put in, and major trees getting taken down so that these extra little apartments can get built in the, you know? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, that, so.
It's really frustrating to see all these large trees come down because of all of the people coming in and building.
To answer your question, yes, incentives are about the only thing we can do for private trees. So what would, how that would flow out of this document is this document would, you know, articulate that we prioritize both public and private trees, the urban canopy, and then our urban, our, our tree committee would work with planning and zoning and others to come up with what those incentives might be.
Committee has come back.
It is coming back. Yes, you can sign up on the website. We announced that last Wednesday.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mary Wilkows, again. I just want to say how much I appreciate the process that you used tonight, and it just seemed very functional and calm and boring in a good way. I really, we all know other examples. So also, I really appreciate the transparency that is present tonight with the comments. And you kept saying how much, how fast we're moving compared to two thousand and nine. I wasn't here in two thousand and nine, but I agree. I think it is going really fast, even with displaying all the comments. And I really appreciated tonight seeing, I mean, I contributed a lot of comments, but I appreciated seeing all the other public comments that were made. And I learned a lot tonight by sitting through this process. So I would encourage you to go through the same process for the second meeting, which you'll probably finish the document, you know, if it's like this. I think it's worth it to take the time to do that, rather than say to the council people, hey, just pick the comments that you like and bring them back, and then the rest of us kind of miss out on that. So that, that would be my hope that you would consider that. Thank you.
Thanks for that feedback.
I would add, if I may, Mr. Mayor, we have done that in the last two years that I've been on planning and zoning. We have these same meetings with the same process with planning and zoning monthly.
Thank you for all your hard work, sisters. I don't see any other public comments, so I just want to thank everyone for investing their time coming out tonight. Council members.
Oh, thank you.
Public, thank you. Tell your friends, keep following along. We'll get through this, and then we'll notice it for public hearing, where that's the big show, where there's anything missing, you'll get three minutes, and potentially the council will adopt the conflict at that time. So we'll keep you abreast of that. With that, I adjourn the meeting at eight oh six.